Call to me in order, roll call.
Mrs. Kratz.
Here.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Dieroff.
Present.
Mr. Panarello.
Here.
All present.
Right. Please.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a vision and justice for all.
The board had a previous executive session Tuesday, June 11th, lasted one hour.
At this time, the district auditors Barbican Thornton and company will be providing an audit presentation to the school board.
Thank you very much for having me here.
Just push your button on that.
I was covering it with my paperwork, sorry about that. Thank you very much for having me here, I'm delighted to be out presenting the results of our audit of your organization's financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2023. Pleased to let you know, our opinion on the financial statements is unmodified, which is also known as a clean audit opinion, which means that based on the results of our testing, which included a combination of specific transaction testing, as well as control and process testing for your organization, we found the financial statements as a whole to be fairly presented. Additionally, as a organization that receives $750,000 or more that originates at the federal government level, you're subject to the Federal Single Audit Act, so I'm pleased to let you know that we are also issuing a clean, unmodified opinion on the compliance with your major federal programs. For this year, the programs that were identified as major federal programs were the ESAR program, as well as your IDEA special education funding. Additionally, if we identify material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your organization's controls, we're required to report them to the board. I'm pleased to let you know that we did not identify any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or other matters to bring before the board. Wanted to highlight just a couple things on your organization's financial statements. For those of you who have heard me present before, you may know, the district, like all government organizations that follow government accounting standards, presents on two different bases. So first of all, you have an entity-wide basis, which looks at the district like you would look at a corporation or other business. On this basis, all of your long-term capital assets are reflected as assets, and all of your liabilities, like debt, are reflected as liabilities. This differs from the other basis, which is your short-term budgetary basis, which we call the modified accrual basis, which really looks at near-term financial resources and needs. On the entity-wide full accrual basis, the district continues, like all districts in Pennsylvania, to be significantly impacted by its proportionate share of the Peasars net pension liability, which has, I believe, every district in the state reflecting a deficit net position as a whole, but it has come down. So this year, your net pension liability was about $136 million. I had borrowed a version of these slides from three years ago, and it was like $170,000, $170 million then. So it is, even though it's still a very large number, it is slowly coming down. And as I've said in the past, even before it was reflected on your financial statements, it's something that the bond markets had already baked into ratings and things like that. So while it's there, it's something that the rating agencies have said, it could be a problem, but we know about it, and it's sort of a controlled, like Peasars has a plan in place, the markets have shown themselves to be relatively comfortable with that. So while it continues to be a deficit net position, it is a sort of a controlled deficit in that way. Looking at your current year results, the one thing that the net pension liability really does is when there's significant changes in that net pension liability, we have deferrals that are used to sort of try to time it out over a five-year period, but you can still see pretty large swings. So you'll see this year, your governmental activities show a $28 million increase or an improvement, which means that the deficit was reduced by that amount. When we look at the fund level picture, you'll see still a good picture, but something a little different. You'll also see this year, the business-type activities column, that's your food service fund, which was able to generate resources in the current year. The food service fund does carry a proportion of that net pension liability, so that's why it's also in a deficit position, but your district, like all the districts we work with, really in '22 and '23 into '24, has really seen a recovery in the food service after a couple really difficult years. As I mentioned, looking at your general fund, your operating fund, your budget for the year had called for a decrease in fund balance of about $2.5 million. We were lucky in a number of ways as a state, in that we saw better state funding than was maybe initially anticipated. You also, like other districts in Pennsylvania, were the beneficiary of the fact that in the year ended June 30, 2023, investment markets that you were able, as a government entity, to participate in, finally had returns for the first time in years. So your district had budgeted $50,000 for investment earnings in the year, which was pretty consistent, most districts were between $50,000 and $100,000 in budgeted investment earnings. Your investment earnings for the year ended June 30, 2023, were about $2.5 million. And that is because, as a school district, you are limited to invest in certain very safe markets, and those markets had historically, for the last five to 10 years, had near zero returns. As interest rate went up, you were able to, the markets were able to take advantage of that to return some funds for the district. And we've seen that carry into 2024. Looks at this point, you know, as auditors, we don't really look into the future, looks like, we'd been telling districts, '24 was probably going to be the last year you'd see a lot of that money. You know, interest rates are holding stable, for better or for worse, it does seem like going into '25, we're probably going to see that number go down as far as what interest earnings you're able to receive, but we're hopeful that they'll still be a little bit there. But the long and short of it, as a result of those various factors, the district was actually able to improve its fund balance by about $1.4 million during the year ended June 30, 2023, which, when you look at, you know, $139 million revenue, $138 million expenditure, it's, you are about 1% better than budget, which is, to be honest, to be that close to budget is great, it's hard with how many moving targets there have been, but wanted to provide that information to give you a little bit of a look into sort of the financial statements, what really, as a board, you should take out of them, because I know it's an 81-page document, and all of it's important to someone, but not everything's important to everyone. So I wanted to really highlight these few things, and then I wanted to open it up. So I want to open now and ask if anybody has any questions about the audit, about the financial statements, or about anything else that I could touch on. All right. Well, with that, I thank you for having me out tonight, and I thank your district and you as a board for placing your trust in us, and it's a pleasure to serve you and to see you tonight, and I hope you have a great evening. Thank you.
Mr. Brophy, BCIO.
Nothing this week.
Ms. Updegrove. BCTC.
Yes, I have the students of the quarter for the east and the west campus. Actually, the west campus is the Lee'sport campus, and I have Clayton on Levingood, 11th grade recreational power equipment technology, these are Borhtown students, Josephine Benadero Vez Cosmetology, she's an 11th grader, Jacob Binder, 10th grade Diesel Technology, Haley Casey, 10th grade Auto Technology, Owen Dikey, Protective Services Law Enforcement, she's an 11th grader, and Izanne Hood, 10th grade Auto Technology 1, Macy Kindig, 11th grade Sports Medicine and Rehab Therapy. I have Sawyer Lunch, 11th grade HVAC and Refrigeration, Joseph McBrides, 12th grade Building Construction Occupations, Kevin Miller, 11th grade Auto Technology 2, Dakota Pasquide, 12th grade Computer Systems Networking and Security, Jordan Singh Haas, 11th grade Heavy Equipment Operations, and Faith Ugel, Ugel, 12th grade Protective Services Homeland Security, and those were all students from the Borhtown East Campus, which is the only campus, Wes is Lee'sport. So those students there had their quarterly students' achievements. That's it.
Steel Science Curriculum Presentation.
Good evening, thank you for having us this evening. As you may recall, we were here twice over the past few months to give a little bit of background information about the new state's science standards that are coming out, and the need to look at some new curriculum materials to go along with that work. So we're going to go through and just give you an update on where we're at. Mrs. Towne has spent quite a bit of time with the middle school and high school teachers, looking at different resources, and coming to some consensus on what will be the best fit for our district, and we're here to present those to you this evening. So we do have linked the two prior presentations for your reference, in case you care to go back and refresh on either of those, but Mrs. Towne's going to share with you about middle school and high school.
All right, so tonight, we really want to focus on the recommendations that we're making for our secondary science curriculum for Steel's implementation. So as Mrs. Landis said, we looked with our secondary science teachers to find a resource that was NGSS-aligned, and that met, and we met with various vendors, and really looked at these different resources using the NGSS rubric, our understanding of our district, and then based on kind of the feedback we were getting from vendors. Ultimately, if you look at middle school, we chose lab aids for grades six through eight, and if you would like at some point to access lab aids, you can see there's a link there as well. As you go to the next slide, you will see, this should look very familiar to you. We use this as our criteria for looking at a resource, and lab aids really met what we were looking for as a district. It has the 3D learning integrated into the resource, it allows for student sense-making, there's coherence to a great extent, there's an assessment system and hands-on materials. That's one thing that the lab aids program is really known for, it's their labs. You know, it's been around for about 60 years, and that's something that their strength has been, and as NGSS came out, it is a piece that they started to embed into their curriculum, into their resource. So lab aids, as teachers looked at this and reviewed, they looked at many different resources, Noatom, Amplify, OpenSciEd, and this really was the one that grade six through eight teachers and the Office of Teaching and Learning said, this is what our district is most appropriate for our district, will support our NGSS implementation, the Steel's implementation, and so this comprehensive program is what we are recommending to move forward with implementation. The great thing about this is not only are we recommending this at grade six through eight, we're also recommending lab aids at the high school level for both biology and chemistry. So again, we were seeing the same comprehensive program that allowed our students to have those hands-on activities, to do sense-making, and this program has a book for students that we're going to be providing per class, it also has access for teachers, a teacher edition, teacher resources that help supplement and support them in implementation, and then, of course, there are the kits. So we're recommending this for biology as well, and very much creating coherence from grade six through eight and into our ninth grade biology course. For chemistry, we are also recommending lab aids, again, creating that coherency. They did structure this chemistry program a little differently than they are structuring the grades six through eight in biology, but it's still NGSS-aligned. One of the areas that the teachers are going to be working on this coming year is really making sure they're looking at the phenomena and the storylines. So when we look at chemistry and lab aids, we're seeing that it's an incomplete storyline, and there's some inconsistencies with phenomena, so that's something that our teachers, our chemistry teachers are aware of. They like that it's coherent with the grade six through eight and biology, so this is an area that they will still be able to support NGSS and Steel's implementation, but it is one area that they will address. So again, we're going with, we are recommending lab aids, and then our last recommendation is SEVAS for physics. Unfortunately, lab aids does not have a physics program, otherwise, I'm sure we would have loved to choose that and really create that true. My science teachers heard all of the time, I was like, coherent, I want a program that's coherent, that really creates that progression of learning. So we would have loved to have a physics program with lab aids, but they just don't have that as part of their curriculum. So teachers at the high school also reviewed a number of resources, and they found that SEVAS, Experience Physics, met the needs of our district and aligned to NGSS as well. This, again, kind of like the chemistry that we're seeing in lab aids, there are some areas where they're going to have to bring in their own expertise of the NGSS standards and Steel standards, and bring that into the curriculum, into the pacing guides, but in general, this, again, will support sense-making, it will support 3D learning, it will really support that hands-on environment that we would like to see in our science classrooms. So I really do want to thank you who, you know, who came and really looked at the resources and took time to do that, I truly appreciate that, and having the opportunity to share those with you.
As we look at these materials, one of the things that we need to be aware of is also the, not only the upfront cost as we start this initial investment, but also the ongoing expenses, which is primarily the kits with the resources that go along with the actual phenomena-based work that the students and the teachers are doing and the experiments that they're conducting. So you can see here, we have it broken down by those different resources that Mrs. Towne shared with you at the different levels, middle school, high school biology, high school chemistry, and high school physics. And we looked at some different pieces that were available with these, and what would, again, best fit our needs here in the district. So they do have a teacher portal for lab aids that we would look to utilize. That purchase is a seven-year purchase, which would basically take us through our curriculum cycle with science, so that portal, we would have access to for seven years with that cost. We would have some student books available in each classroom for students to be able to refer to, and then, again, the equipment and the kits that we would need for students. Some of those are consumable things that we would have to replace each year, and some of them are non-consumable items that we would be able to use year after year. And then the high school physics program, there's a teacher's guide as well, and a student edition there also, there's hard copies for the classrooms, and also a digital license for those physics resources and the kits there as well. So you can see, the initial cost is about almost $500,000 total, just for secondary science. We do have some ESAR funds remaining that we're looking to use to support those initial purchases, and then the ongoing costs would be funded through our budget in the Office of Teaching and Learning. In terms of elementary, our timeline is a little bit different for the elementary schools. We're looking to do the curriculum materials recommendation in the upcoming school year, so we're not quite there yet with finalizing that piece. We do have some sample kits in each of the elementary buildings, and the classroom teachers have the opportunity to conduct a resource review and look at the materials that we have available for them in the elementary schools, so that they can help make, you know, a good decision about what is going to best meet their needs. The ones that we're currently looking at are Activate Prime, FOSS, and Mystery Science. So we're hoping to wrap that up at the start of next school year, and make some, come to you with some recommendations for your approval next year for elementary. So the next steps that we have at this point, middle school and high school, we are seeking for a vote from all of you on June 25th at your next meeting, to hopefully approve the curriculum materials purchase, again, using ESAR funds for the bulk of that. And then with the elementary, we have a fall 2024 timeline to finalize that resource review with teachers, we'll be using some of our professional learning time to meet with the elementary teachers, get feedback from them on the resources that they've taken a look at, and then no later than spring of next school year, we would be coming to you with a recommendation for approval for purchase of some elementary resources. Because of the timeline of that, the bulk of that would be coming from the OTL budget, because the ESAR funding would have been expended at that point. And then, once again, as we've shared with you previously, the 2025-26 school year is when we are required to have that full Steel's implementation happening in our schools, and when the assessments will begin to align with those new standards as well. So this work would get us right in that timeline where we need to be in order to prepare our students and our staff for that shift. Anything else, Mrs. Towne? All right, any questions? Mr. Zawada?
How much did we work, or you've worked with other school districts on this? I had asked in the meeting, are there going to be, are we using a lot of similarities with other school districts, possibly reducing price?
We have had communication with other districts. We have a monthly Berks County Curriculum Coordinators meeting, where we have an opportunity to discuss topics such as this with the curriculum coordinators from across Berks County. We also personally reached out to a few other districts, Springford and OJ Roberts specifically, we had some conversations with curriculum staff in those districts as well. There's a variety of different resources that people are looking to use, there's quite a few that are looking to use OpenSciEd, that was one that came up quite commonly, but the ones that we mentioned were some ones that other districts are looking to utilize as well. But I wouldn't say that there's one that everybody is using, you know, there's benefits to each of the different ones, and just finding what's the best fit for our district, and I think we've done that.
Thank you for taking into consideration also what the board had given you about the prior information you were looking for. Science is important, I think maybe next year, we should try to implement a little more of the elementary school, because that's the starting point when the minds are more, be able to be proved, and I think it'll help us in the middle school and high schools. So maybe look into something like that, too.
Well, Mrs. Joyce is here this evening, and she has big plans for the elementary school next year as they continue this work and work to implement that. The one thing we have to keep in mind with our elementary is, many of our teachers at the elementary level teach both science and English Language Arts, and we've had the structured literacy mandates that have been coming down the pike that we've been training the teachers on as well, so we have a lot of elementary teachers that are having both of those initiatives at the same time, and so we're really trying to make sure that we pace those things appropriately, and where there's opportunity for those two content areas to really overlap and intermix, you know, we've been doing some of that work as well, so. Yep, you're welcome. Mrs. Scott?
Hey, for the, for the middle school science, were you moving to five days? I think we talked about five days this year to do science, five days a week next year, or are you still discussing that? Because you do three days right now for science, right?
So in sixth grade...
In sixth grade.
In sixth grade, they have a half year of science and a half year of social studies, it's a double period. So they get two periods a day, but for half of the year, they do science, and half of the year, they do social studies. In seventh and eighth grade, it's a single period every day in the six-day cycle throughout the school year. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Public comment period number one, Donia Savage.
Based on your conversation at the last meeting, I signed up to speak about the resolution, but it's not on the agenda, I'm not sure why, so I'll save my comment for public comment period number two.
John Emy.
John Emy, New Hanover Township, speaking on policy, the changes that have been, that were being proposed for policy 105.1. A little concerned about these changes, because I want to echo what I heard, I guess I say Mr. Brad Updegrove, so we can distinguish between them, Mr. Brad Updegrove said last week. Not sure where the impetus for this change is coming from, because at the end of the day, especially once you caught, once you caught the potential for allowing for the very broader, much more in-depth formal audit, once you caught the fact that you had rewritten it originally to let that happen many times, you didn't really change anything. Parents have always had the right to come in to talk to their teachers about their kids' curriculum, as a matter of fact, I would say that most teachers, most teachers would welcome it. So I'm not really seeing the end game here, I'm not a big fan of making policy changes unless you are hearing something from either, either the, you know, parents, teachers, students, whatever. There's no need to change policies when there isn't really anything that that policy is going to change in the first place, so I am concerned about making changes to policies when you're not really understanding what, potentially understanding what the knock-on effects might be. Teachers are really busy as it is, this is just one more thing they're going to have to worry about. Again, I go back to what I talked about early, I go back to what I talked about a long time ago, when we were talking about the relationship between the community and the teachers. Teachers are the lifeblood of our schools, and we should be encouraging a partnership type of relationship between parents and teachers, and not an adversarial one. So I hope you guys will make your thinking a little bit more clear about, were you hearing some complaints from parents, were you hearing anything from parents, and how many of those parents you would have heard from? Love to hear what you heard, because at the end of the day, you didn't change anything, and so I'm not understanding why you're going to make a policy change to begin with. Policies changing just for policy's sake are not good policy. Thank you.
Right now, we're looking for the approval of the May 28, 2024 Board of School Directors' meeting minutes as presented. I'll second.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove? Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I will be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes the settlement agreement for student number 300580.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is the administration, I'm sorry, I can't tell if I'm... My little thing keeps popping off. The administration recommends the Board of School Directors approve policy 105.1, review of instructional materials by parents, guardians, and students for second reading, approval effective June 11th, 2024.
Zawada moves.
Scott seconds.
I just have a question. Is this something the administration had recommended, or is this just coming from the committee?
Committee originally discussed it, and then our superintendent took it to the teachers and learning.
Office of Teacher and Learning.
Yeah, Office of Teacher and Learning got feedback from the teachers, and we adjusted a couple of things, and what you see in front of you now is what they're fine with.
Okay, I guess my question is, why didn't it come to committee before any changes were made to ask us?
Because it was done before the knowledge of what we needed to do. The same thing that would happen before. So I apologize, but that's the way it was read last week or last meeting. And that's, you know, again, all I can say is I apologize. We're going to try to do it different from now on and do what we're supposed to do and call, you know, for policy meetings ahead of time, post them to the public, and then go from there. If you want to throw the vote because it wasn't brought to you, I would understand.
Okay, Mrs. Torsia, are you behind this?
I believe with the recommendations that we made and the discussion that we had at the last meeting and with the review with our Office of Teaching and Learning, that we're at a point where it is a palatable policy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Only because I'm concerned about the workload for the teachers. Hopefully, I'm wrong, but no.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
No.
Ms. Dieroff?
No.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, the administration is looking for the school board to approve the personnel agenda as presented. Mr. Hawn, do you have anything that you would like to add to it once a motion is on the floor? Once, first and second.
I do not.
First is Zawada and Mr. Panarello. Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Mrs., Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy? Ms. Dieroff?
Yes, he leaves another custodian. Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Hawn, did you want to recognize anyone in the audience?
I just have one question real quick on the numbers here. The last music teacher, is that really 101424 to 662025?
For the leave?
For the leave?
Yes, so they will be out on FMLA, then extended sick, and then uncompensated leave.
Okay. So that is, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure it's correct. Okay, thank you.
I do want to give Mr. Palladino an opportunity to introduce our new head football coach, Jamie Sands.
Tonight, we're lucky to have Coach Sands with us. Coach Sands comes to us from the past few years, he's been at Wilson High School as an assistant coach there. Before that, he was at Lancaster Catholic as their defensive coordinator when they were state champions, and before that, at Mannheim Township. So he comes to us with experience at big schools with winning programs, and we're lucky to have him here. So I want to introduce everybody to Coach Sands. I'll keep him around after the meeting if anybody wants to meet him.
Maybe he wants to say a few words now.
If I have the opportunity to represent your school district, forget everything I got, we'll work. We will, well, I'm ready to get to work. Yeah, I'm sorry. I got to get used to talking to large groups, right? Is this still on? Yeah, I've seen the infamous button here. Yeah, I'm just excited to get to work with your, with the young gentleman and your school district, try to make your Friday nights the most enjoyable they possibly can on and off the field. So, you know, I'm just really excited to be here. I think you got a great district, and I think you have a lot of people that care about what's going on here. So I would like to say thank you for the opportunity. If it presents itself, I would love to have it. Thank you.
Me, too.
I'd also like to recognize Claire Boddy, who is here. She is our .5 art teacher at Washington, so we're very happy to have her as well.
Thank you.
Public comment period number two, Ruth Baker.
Yeah. Good evening. Following up on last month's notes on artificial turf, I wanted to finish up the items that I'd like to remind you folks of, which many of you have seen already my thoughts on this. First of all, looking to the end of the time when you have to replace the turf, may I suggest that you look and see what other school districts are doing with their spent turf. There is not right now a recycling avenue for it, and the average landfill does not accept large rolls of materials like that. So you also need to make sure that it is non-hazardous, and given the questions about arsenic and lead that have been in some of the crumb infill for these fields, I think you should do some T-clip testing, if you can, on some other districts' spent turf field materials that are similar to what you all are looking to install here. That way, you'll have confidence at least that you are not potentially generating a hazardous waste at the end of your turf life. The other thing I was interested in, I've heard anecdotal remarks that some other districts do not wish to play on grass fields here or march on them perhaps. I'd be curious if you've gotten any written notices to that effect from other district school boards in the league, athletic directors, heads of music programs, somebody that has decision-making ability for what their, where their students go. If not, then I'm wondering whether this is a program that is being led simply by chance remarks from other districts. It's a lot of money to spend, and we've already spent the first 270-some million, or 1,000 on studies and designs, and yet the most basic questions don't seem to have been publicly answered at least. So I would urge you all to do that and inform us what you're finding. Thank you.
I just wanted to, I've been talking to you about public education funding from the state. Wanted to let you know that a wonderful thing happened yesterday. The Pennsylvania House passed House Bill 2370. It supports that seven-year plan proposed by the Basic Education Funding Commission that will bring Pennsylvania into constitutional compliance for funding public schools adequately and fairly. It proposes an increase to public ed funding for the 2024-2025 fiscal year that includes the $2.1 million for Boyertown inadequacy and tax equity supplements that you've already built into your budget. And it provides a, proposes a flat rate for cyber charter school tuition that will save Boyertown another $1.8 million a year. And these increases, it also increases the accountability and transparency for cyber charter schools. So this bill was passed with some bipartisan support. However, the three representatives who collectively cover the Boyertown area voted no. They voted no to giving this district the funding it needs so that you, the board, can have meaningful conversations about restoring cuts that have been made over the past 15 years because of inadequate state funding, about keeping schools current and improving the quality of our school. For example, full-day kindergarten, smaller class sizes, turf fields. And it allows you to have meaningful conversations for alleviating the need for the board to raise property taxes, a tax that's a big burden for young families and people on fixed incomes. So our representatives voted against it. You have not told them what you think yet. Now the bill's referred to the Senate. The passage there is expected to be more challenging. Your Voice Matters Board, pass a resolution, and everyone's voice matters. So tomorrow is a day of action. Call Senator Penichuk tomorrow and ask her to advocate for and support this bill and our community. Her phone number in Harrisburg is 717-787-3110, or you can use the contact information from her website. With my remaining time, I want to tell you, I was listening to yesterday's proceedings about the bill, and the opposition that I heard was very insulting to you. It pretty much said, "You have lots of money in your savings account because you've overtaxed your people." And they said, "If they give you more money, you will just spend more money." So if that doesn't insult you and tell you they don't know what you're trying to do here, I don't know what will. So please contact Senator Penichuk, pass a resolution. Tell her what you need in this district. Thank you.
John Amy.
Just want to make a comment about the discussion on the turf fields. I think I told you when I talked about the turf fields before that in principle, I was in favor of them, but I wanted to see a lot more transparency around how we were going to replenish the capital fund after we spent the money on the turf. In the past few weeks since the discussion has happened, I've heard such statements when, you know, whenever budgets and finances were coming up, I heard such statements as, "Well, we're not really talking about that right now. We're talking about anything else, so I'm not going to give you any information on that right now. We're talking about the regular budget. We're not talking about the capital budget." Well, in general, the budget is the budget, whether it's the capital budget or whether it's the, it's the operational budget. Eventually, you're going to have to replace those funds, and I really, really, really think that we need to be a lot more transparent about where we're going to come up with the money. Because, you know, a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago, we were talking about changes to the curriculum at the high school or changes to the schedule at the high school, and you talked about all the things you wanted to do, like hiring language teachers and hiring more, you know, hiring more language teachers for the elementary and middle school grades and talking about how we couldn't afford that. So I'd really like to see the plan, you know, if we were talking about then how things we couldn't afford, I'd really, really like to see a plan for what we're going to do going forward to replenish the capital fund once we've decided to spend on the turf. The last bit of non-transparency I definitely want to call out is last meeting where one of the board members, Mr. Brophy, asked for some information, and it was brought to the board's attention because apparently it was going to take longer than an hour for the district to be able to provide that information to Mr. Brophy, and so comes to the president per policy. But the discussion was not really a discussion. First of all, Mr. Brophy wasn't present, so I thought it was extremely inappropriate to hold that at a meeting when the person who asked for the information wasn't even here. And during the course of the discussion, nobody seemed to know what information was even being requested. So not really sure how you can have a discussion when you're not even really sure about what information's being requested. This speaks to being transparent and open with the public, not just with the people that agree with you, but also the people that disagree with you. So in the future, A, I'd like to see a lot more discussions about future planning, and B, if you're going to have a discussion about request for board information, be transparent about what the information has actually been requested about so you can actually have an open and honest discussion, and be respectful of the person that asks for the information. Don't hold that discussion when he's not present. Thank you.
Alicia Turizi.
My name is Alicia Turizi. Excuse me. I'm a teacher at Middle School West and the head field hockey coach at the high school. You guys all know me because I've spent a lot of time here over the last 10 months. And, you know, back in the end of February, when you guys passed the turf approval, I was very hopeful that this coming fall would be the last time the field hockey team would be dealing with renting facilities, paying Arsinus to host a game, to figuring out how we're going to get these kids from Boyertown to the two different turf fields that we used during the fall. I've been very concerned over the last few meetings that we're really dragging our feet so hard that it's not going to be the last season. And I'm hoping that if it is not the last season, that you guys can help us fund the turf rentals that we need to have a successful field hockey season. I've also heard a lot of talk about us being very concerned about the chemicals that are going into the ground because of the turf, but when we are using fertilizers, weed killers, paints on the grass fields right now, I've never heard anybody question or be concerned about all of those pollutants that are going into the ground to maintain the fields that we have. The other thing, I, the other thing that a lot of people are talking about is all the professional teams and top college programs going to grass. That's great. If we had a, if we had a grass field, the best field I ever played on was, were polo fields. If we had a polo field in the back at Boyertown, we'd love to play on grass polo field, but that costs millions of dollars to maintain. It needs to be cut at an inch long, and it is, you get on that on a rainy day, it gets torn up, you need to replace it. You need to have guys working on crews full-time to maintain fields like that. All the pro teams have that. The top college teams have it. Ones that can't afford that are playing on turf, which is the next best thing. So I'm hoping that you guys continue to move along with this process and keep us competitive. I'm going to answer, I'm not sure what her name is, but she was talking about people not wanting to do that. My son was in the band at Springford, and when they were here for a band competition, they couldn't use their props. And we, as parents, had to go out and buy pants for our kids because they couldn't even use their uniforms because they were afraid when they knelt down, because they used to do that in their competition, that they would get muddy and they wouldn't be able to turn those uniforms around for the week, the following weekend. So there, that's legit. It actually does happen, and it's not just for field hockey.
Board comment. Ms. Rutherford?
No comment.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes, I am going to comment. In the years that I have been on this board, anytime board leadership administration does not want to turn information over to a board member, there's usually a reason. And I can cite several reasons since I've been on And I can cite several reasons since I've been on the board. One in particular, where there was a backdoor deal going on with a past superintendent, and it took five votes, which I finally got from the opposition side. I got the vote I needed from them. And in turn, I think Mr. Sultana can remember, I put in to know the legal expenses and found out that a board member on their own was going and doing, trying to do a teacher or superintendent contract. So, all I'm saying is anytime board administration does not want to turn something over to a board member, there's usually a reason they're trying to cover something up. Don't do it. Let's be transparent. If a board member wants something, give it to them. We should not have to do a right-to-know. We're trying to do our job, and I don't see any harm in anybody getting that information and all of us board members looking at it. It's our job. We're trying to do our job. That's the way I felt when I was looking for information, and that's just one incident. There were a couple more. So, please, turn information over to the board. Be transparent.
Yes, I wondered how our fundraisers were coming along that we had said we started for the turf fields, and which ones are they? And also, how is our state rep and state senator doing with a couple million dollars? I think Mr. Sawada said they were looking to get us.
As soon as we get numbers, that's all I ask for.
No, how are they making out with trying to get us money?
Right now, they're trying to get a budget done, so I, I don't know how much money we're going to need, and that's why we have the company that we have right now. So, I can go up there and say, "We need 500,000, only spend 250,000." That's not right to them either. So, you need to know what you need to stay able to spend.
I think if we're, if we're looking at 7 million for a turf field, and you made the comment, they were looking at 2 to 3 million. I think that's a no-brainer. The other thing is, I brought up a lot of questions at the last meeting about the contract for design, or whatever it's properly labeled. Have you discussed it? What's the deal there? I brought up a lot of questions nobody had answers for. Mr. President?
No, I have no comment.
Well, what are we doing with it? Are we proceeding with a contract that we don't understand, or is it on hold? I thought we were going to talk about it.
I don't know why you thought that.
Because the solicitor said. It certainly needs to be discussed.
It needs to be looked at.
Or looked at, whatever, however he, he worded it, but all these questions are hanging out in the air.
Ms. Sultana, did you guys look at it?
We are looking right now. We just got today, Mr. Shield shared with me a draft contract with Dewey Engineering. I'll be honest with you, we have not looked at it yet.
It just came in today.
So, what?
So, they haven't looked at it yet? It just came in today.
The other thing is, I think some board members looked at the survey that was out, so could you give us a report on that, Mrs. Scott, what you found there? Because not everybody went. I appreciate knowing.
Okay. I actually was going to talk about it, but then I felt like other things were taking place. Okay, so, we did meet with Mr. Stout and Mrs. Landis, and we went through the contract and what, or the surveys, and what stood out to me, I'm going to give you my opinion rather than, and I might state a couple of things that say, they said. For the teachers, they, we didn't get a big response. I think it was about 50% of the teachers, which I'd like to see more, but that's okay. That's, that's a start. They, they were pretty good. They, they felt that they get good backing from their administration. They did feel like they lacked resources, and so I'm hoping that, you know, bringing in this curriculum and helping is part of that, filling those things up. As far as parents, again, we didn't get a lot of response from parents, and I would have liked to seen more from them, and we didn't really delve into the parents too much. What I, what we did talk about, or they, the, I think it was one of the administrators, I'm sorry, talked about the time being spent to go over these surveys, and when I hear time being spent, that's like a, a red light to me as someone that used to have to watch labor costs. It's like, okay, what, a lot of time is being spent for these surveys, and they were non-conclusive at this point. Maybe they're not now, maybe we have, they, they've come up with a little more information on our school climate, which is why these surveys went out in the first place. My opinion and my recommendation to the board would be, they, they did say something about planning a survey in the fall and in the spring. I'm okay with surveying teachers, and I'm fine with, with surveying parents. I feel like they have the life experience to answer a survey well. I don't feel like elementary students should be involved or middle school, and I would ask maybe 11th and 12th graders because now they've had some experience in school. And I would definitely ask that if they are working on writing a survey still for the fall and the spring, that the board would see the questions and even have some questions to add if they would like. So, that was my take from it, and I hope that was helpful, but that, that's my suggestion to just keep it with the adults because they have the experience to answer well, and, and maybe we'll get some insight from that as to what our school really needs because as a board member, we don't always know. So...
Thank you. The one big question I have on the turf design, why, and this is something you wouldn't have to research, I just want to know why you put in there, if there's a lawsuit, it would be in Montgomery County and not Berks, where Berks County school, the field is in Berks County. Why you would put a Montgomery County in there? I never see...
That was an error on the part of the, the document that was provided. I, I'm quite certain it was just missed by them because they do a lot of, or potentially do work on the Montgomery County side, is my assumption.
In the final contract, which you will be voting on, it will reflect Berks County.
Okay, so, well, that goes back to my question. What, what we did vote on, is that now not the final contract? Well, we'll be voting again.
You'll be voting on, actually, all you voted on was the, was it on the RFP, which is a request for proposal. That is not the final contract. That is the solicitation to the vendors to address that. When you actually vote on the contract for the artificial turf fields, that will be a finalized contract document based upon would likely will be some negotiation on what the pricing of the fields would be at this point in time. So, what you voted on can be best analogized as preparing to prepare for the artificial turf fields.
And will only be, in the contract that we, we will be voting on, will that only be in there about the turf, not all the concrete sidewalks and, and new buildings to house equipment and...
I can't speak to that, but I'm sure that there will be, need to be some infrastructure associated with the turf fields themselves in order to make them accessible and subject to whatever the local land use requirements would be for a turf field, and that would go directly to the pricing of the project, which you will be voting on.
Like, who makes up, who's going to be making up the contract?
Ultimately, the board votes on the contract, but the decision as to what to recommend to the board in terms of the projects will be made administratively in conjunction with Dewey Engineering. Is that a fair representation, Patty, of that issue?
Yes, the Director of Facilities, once the contract is approved by Mr. Sultana's office, will be shared with the board, and we can ask the Director of Facilities to do a presentation and go line by line if needed.
Before it goes out for bid. So, I was curious on what lot they're saying has to be replaced.
That can be answered by the Director of Facilities when he is here and will present to the board.
So, we didn't vote to spend $277,000? Did I miss that?
Mary Beth, and I don't know if you can look it up because I'm in the active meeting. I believe we accepted their proposal subject to solicitor review, but in light of all the discussion at the board level, I think it's prudent that we bring that full contract back and have, you know, the ability for everybody to take a look at it once it's approved by the solicitor.
Okay, so, we're not on the hook for $277,000 at this time?
The solicitor hasn't approved it, so you're not on the hook for $277,000.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Then I don't have any more questions until I see the new document.
And I won't approve it unless a majority of this board is willing to approve it. That's called a survival reason.
I'll have one more. Do we get the, Mrs. Danical, did we get the Act 1 index yet?
Yes, that's been shared at previous board meetings. I don't have those presentations in front of me with everything that we're doing right now. I don't want to...
How did I miss that? Okay, thank you.
The Act 1 index, you mean for, for F...
The 2425 year?
Yeah, yeah.
6.2.
Okay.
For our district.
For our district. That's usually issued during the month of September.
We've had it in previous presentations during this school year.
Oh, I know what, I'm sorry. I said the wrong thing for the homestead.
Those numbers will be available prior to the June 25th board meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize. I was in the wrong church with the wrong people.
I'll pass. Anything I was going to say has been said by others.
I want to discuss the proclamations. Basically, I was contacted by an area resident, thought it was something, we sat down and looked at the pluses. I had per, I had gotten copies from, of other schools, what they were looking at. I sat down and asked Mary Beth or Mrs. Torsia, take a look at it. She had somebody in the administration basically write it the way we wanted it to be. Based on a couple of the board members that did show concern, we pulled it off the agenda, and I'm glad we did. I contacted Donna Sherron on Sunday, okay? I have a good enough relationship with her. She told me basically what had happened. It did pass, okay, the House. It was passed on party lines. It is going to the Senate. Basically, the Senate, it's dead on arrival. But the biggest thing that we, I found out, which blew me away, was basically, even if we do get a chance at the 2.1 million, we have to raise our taxes to max to the Act 1 for the next three years. So, spending that, I don't see anything, how that's advantageous to our school district or our residents. Also, there was a number in there of $7,500 for a flat fee for charter schools, which we've talked about for the last three years, and kind of agree, that's a fair number for... That was changed to 12,000 through PSBA lobbying and also education, Society of Education. So, to sit there and spend that and, and not have any kind of guarantees, it was smoke and mirrors by our governor, and luckily, Donna and all our local representatives did vote no against it. And like I said, pretty much right now, it's dead on arrival at the Senate. So, at this point, you know, I think we could put it behind us. I honestly got involved in this because I thought it was something that we as a board could come together on and vote 9-0 in support of it, but then, again, looking into it due to, you know, three board members, which I appreciate, I do read your emails, you may not think so, but basically, you know, with your concerns, and that's why we pulled it from the agenda. And I apologize for, you know, thinking that this was something that we could do together as a group, and if I had to do it again, I probably would, but I actually would be more educated, okay? And I'm glad Donna returned my call at quarter to eight, Sunday night, and sat down and told me, and we all know that Donna has been president of Southern School District, so if anybody knows what's going on there, you know, four schools, it would be her. And she flat-out said to me, "I am so sick and tired of the politics." So, again, that's what the, was the way it went down, the way it ended, and the way it's dying. So, again, I apologize. If I did do anything wrong to some people on the board, I don't feel I did, but I want to apologize because that, you know, my goal was to try to bring something together that if it was worthwhile, we push the government to do what we need, but our, our governor, Shapiro, doesn't seem to want it. He's looking to play games, and what it basically comes down to is, we're going to spend our taxpayers, our, our citizens, their money before we even get a chance of possibly getting it. So, it's not, I don't think it's anything that we as a group, and if somebody feels we shouldn't do a proclamation, we can look at it and vote on it. So, I also want to welcome the new football coach, and appreciate it, and hope you have a great season. I want to welcome Mrs. Half. I'm going to get this, you're going to have a new nickname forever. So, but again, and I appreciate the comments of our field hockey coach and soccer coach because it is something, and we, I feel you have explained it to, to the community why this is important, and all the work that's been done on the science also is appreciated. Thank you.
Well, before I go to the upcoming meeting, I do want to draw attention to the gentleman all the way out in the lobby, our good old Officer Perez. No, no old there, really. Just recognizing that tonight is his last meeting and his last opportunity of duty for the Boyertown Area School District, and to just thank him publicly again for working, you know, side by side together to, to make Boyertown a safer place for our students and staff each day. So, thank you, Officer Perez, for all of your years. Officially, his last day is July the 5th. He is still around the school district because we had to go back to paper and pencil memorandums of understanding signatures with our local police department, so he's been escorting Mrs. Kramer or helping her get signatures from all of our police departments and just tying up all the end-of-year loose ends, so... But this is his last official meeting, so he won't be back, and he's, he's quite happy to get on. Right. Our next meeting is going to be June 25th here in the Ed Center. There is no July meeting scheduled at this time. However, in the event that we would feel that we would need one, we would reach out and ask for a meeting and do the, the proper announcement in advance. And then, the two meetings set for August are August 13th and August 27th.
You're going to have an executive session that follows the meeting? There will be an executive session that follows the meeting to address personnel issues. Pardon me?
Safety update.
And, and a safety update, right.